Okay, aloha, everyone. For the Government Relations Ethics and Transparency Meeting of October 25th, 2023, please come to order. It is 5:07 PM. I'm your Chair, Nohelani Uuhajens. We have with us today Committee Vice Chair Tamar Palten, Councilmember Tom Cook, Councilmember Gabe Johnson, Council Chair Alice Lee, and Councilmember Shane Sinan. We have with us today as well our committee staff, which include Casey Apol Takayama, Clarissa McDonald, Pauline Martins, Remy Mitchell, and Maria Leon. We also have Angela, Kyala, Sam, and Megan staffing this table. If you could please raise your hand. Thank you. If you have any questions, concerns, thoughts, please share with them. They're gonna take it down, write it down, so we can track your questions. They're gonna share them with us, councilmembers, and if we cannot provide you an answer today, we will get back to you. We want to have a way to provide you some answers. So we have before us today Resolution 23-194 entitled "Developing a Comprehensive Recovery and Resiliency Plan in Response to the Island of Maui's Tragic Fires of August 2023." Resolution 23-194's purpose is to develop a comprehensive recovery and resiliency plan to the island of Maui's tragic fires of August 2023 through a series of complementary ordinances and resolutions. We are at the Lahaina Civic Center today to hear from you, the West Maui community, and those who are unable to attend our previous meeting in Kaanapali. We want to listen to your needs, concerns, and what you envision for West Maui as we develop a plan to move forward. We will continue to navigate through this unprecedented times, and we understand that community may share stories that are difficult to hear, speak, and relive. We want you to know that your wellbeing is the utmost important to us, so please only share what you feel comfortable with sharing. Starting next week Monday, we, the Great Committee, the people you see here, and including the three who are not with us today, will begin having our subject-specific meetings, so we invite you all to attend those. Monday's meeting will be on housing permitting and zoning. Okay, moving on. Since the Great Dash 14 is the only item on the agenda, we will now open public testimony. And as a reminder, the purpose of today's meeting is to hear from the testifiers. This item was posted for no legislative action. We are just here to listen to you today. For this meeting, we will be focused on in-person testifiers, so testimony by phone or video conference will not be available. However, this meeting is being streamed live on Akaku Channel 53 and on their website. You should have signed up to testify when entering the gymnasium. If you completed the form provided by staff when you entered, you will be placed on a testifier's log. If you wish to testify anonymously, please notify staff and they will identify and refer to you as testifier and assign you a number. Written testimony is encouraged and can be submitted via eComment link at mauicounty.us/agendas as well. Oral testimony is limited to three minutes per item, and if you are still testifying beyond that time, I will kindly ask you to wrap up your testimony. Decor must be made at all times. Decor must be maintained at all times, and I appreciate you guys doing so. When staff calls on an individual wishing to testify, they will state who is the next three people to testify. If you hear you are one of the next testifiers, please come make your way to the testifier podium and take a seat next to the podium, so you are ready to testify when your turn is up. Thank you very much for your cooperation, and I'm so excited you guys are all here today. Staff, can you please call the first testifier, please?
Chair, the first individual signed up to testify is Debbie Schultz-Petersen, to be followed by John H. Aquino, Xandra Emerald Kraus, and Paul Pelkey.
I'm sorry, I had to bring them with. They didn't want to get kicked out of Lahaina. Hi, everyone. My name is... closer. Hi, everybody. My name is Debbie Schultz-Petersen. I am a Lahaina resident. I guess I'm transient now. The reason I'm here today is I want to make sure nobody ever goes through this again and has to drive through fire to save themselves and their dogs or their family. One of the big things that was a lot talked about at the last Great Meeting was the restoration of the water rights. I absolutely agree with all of that. However, I did work in the corporate world for 20 years, and I know, just like all government employees, it's gonna take a long time. This isn't... it couldn't be wrapped up in the courts for a decade, and I understand that and I know how difficult it's going to be. One of the main things that we need to do, though, is we need better fire, advanced fire notification. My solution or suggestion is why do we not already have thermal cameras? Many, many western states and many nations across this globe are using thermal technology, whether it's manned or unmanned, in fire towers and all over the place. They are using it to not only detect fires as they're starting, but before they happen. You could use it... you can get a camera and you can set it so that it can send out with the software, send out alarms when an area reaches a certain temperature. I'm gonna use 130 degrees Fahrenheit as an example, because anyone that's ever worked on a farm knows bales of aid can spontaneously combust, right? It's no different than all of this overgrown grass that we have throughout the island. These cameras can look at the area and say, hey, this area is reaching 120 degrees, and that could be a potential fire, and they're able to do preemptive helicopter water drops, send trucks out there and just saturate the area before a fire happens. And due to our infrastructure, which we already know needs upgrading, it could be several years before these lines are buried. We can get something like this with the appropriate budget and set up many, many years ahead of when the water is going to be restored to Lahaina and to these drought-stricken areas. We're in a drought. The county can decide Lahaina's at risk, Kula's still at risk, North Kihei, the central basin by the... it's always fires over there between Kahului and Kihei. These cameras can say, hey, with the software, send it to emergency management, send it to fire departments. You're looking at a fire here. Go take care of it, and we can stop the next big Lahaina fire or something from happening. And again, based on our infrastructure, I do recommend that if we can go down this route of getting these thermal cameras... for getting these thermal cameras, they would need to have their own independent power supply and their own independent communication, whether that's a satling, something like that, to keep the county notified. And I know I'm at my three minutes, and the only other thing I had is as we start to rebuild, I would very much like to see some kind of legislation or requirements that for every one ornamental plant that somebody is planting, they must also plant an endemic or a native plant and/or a fruit-bearing tree. We can do a lot better than just having ornamental grasses all over, and it will really help our community as far as drought and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, any clarifying questions? Thank you. Staff?
Chair, the next individual to testify is John H. Aquino, to be followed by Xandra Emerald Kraus, Paul Pelkey, and then Michelle Lincoln.
You're welcome to sit down. Yeah, come, come. If you want to stand, you're welcome to stand. Maybe we can move them, Mike?
No.
No. Wait, hold on. Thank you.
Yeah, hi. My name is John Mahalono Aquino. I learned about this meeting by accident, like about an hour ago. And I noted the paper outside today, the transparency and ethic meeting. Yeah? So I didn't see any of that at the beginning of the fire. The bad management, yeah? Failures. And people should be accountable. The governor, the mayor, and the police chief. Yeah? Somebody should be accountable. Yeah? Total failure. Yeah? Where's the ethic? Where's the transparency? Yeah? None of that. Can anybody tell me any ethic or transparency? Yeah, so I'm still angry. I'm angry from the beginning of the fire. You can hear my voice, yeah? I'm sad and I'm angry at the same time. Yeah, because these guys is getting away with failure. They should be fired. They should step down. Yeah? If any other corporation, they would be fired, automatic. Yeah? So what's the deal? What kind of power do they have? Yeah, I want to talk to the people. The people have the power. As long as we stay united, you guys got the power. Yeah? You guys have the power. I'm... I live up in Kahului Valley. And the eighties and nineties, we had tons of water coming down the valley, like white rapid water. And where is it now? Where is it? It's not going all the way down to the ocean. It's gone. It's going to this swimming pool right next door. Yeah? It's going to all this swimming pool. What's up with that? Yeah? There's no moral and no value and no ethic. Yeah? You know, like I said, if the people unite, if you guys have the power, all of you guys. Yeah? So I'm... Like I said, from the eighties and the nineties, I lived up in Kahului Valley for a long time. With a lot of water. Yeah? I'm from the seventieth generation. And my generation was responsible for stopping the bombing on Kahului Valley. Yeah? My generation was responsible for bringing back Olelo Hawaii and the culture and the hula and the cow. Yeah? So it's people power. Yeah? People. I mainly want to talk to people, because they can get things done. Yeah? You know, it's gonna be difficult for you guys to get things done, because you guys working in a system, yeah? Yeah, you guys higher up, you guys gotta get okay from. Yeah? But the people are more power. Yeah, that's all I want to say.
Thank you very much. Do you have any clarifying questions? Thank you.
Chair, the next testifier is Xandra Emerald Kraus, to be followed by Paul Pelkey, Michelle Lincoln, and then Steve Arca.
Aloha, ahi, ahi, ana maka maka, maka amen na ohana. I extend my deepest sorry to all of you in Lahaina. My boundaries goes back 150 years here in Lahaina. We lost our heritage house, but thankfully, nobody was killed. I'd like to speak on the cost of government commission Maui County report on wildfire prevention and cost recovery, which was facilitated and done and completed on Maui, July 2021. Following Maui's unprecedented wild session in 2019, where more than 20,000 acres were burned, resources seemingly stretched thin. The cost of government commission decided to examine the country's wildfire response policies and costs. I... one of them was, the first one was, most fires are caused by human beings. Action plan that they said would be good, expand fire percentage prevention. Number two, reduction of alien plants. Action, implement an aggressive plan to replace these invasive plants. Abandoned, three, abandoned sugarcane field growth needs to be action planned. Work with county agriculture personnel and property owners to eliminate fire potentials of these properties. Four, poor camping sites. Manage of management of fires and accidental fires caused by machinery and vehicles. Action plan, expand education. Five, poorly maintained, overgrown properties. Action plan, conduct an aggressive comprehensive property assessment program to identify poorly maintained land. Work with the landowners. Six, grasses and other combustible materials. Action plan, conduct routine inspections and identify road shoulders that need protection and maintenance. Seven, above-ground power lines that fail, fall, and short. Action plan, routinely inspect power transmission lines and rights of way. Eight, current fire breaks are currently 25 feet on property lines that might have been expanded. I do know that the governor and the mayor has been behind my house, hired S.B. Sullivan to expand that to 100 feet behind my house, Haleakala Ranch, to preserve our properties. Arson is another threat, totally preventable. While preventing arson is exceedingly difficult, plan to replace, reduce the impact of such events are preventable. County department should work together to implement barriers designed to contain and slow down.
Dreamers.
One more. Many properties are, the tenth and the last one is, many properties are unfamiliar to the Maui Fire Department. Action plan, consider training mild fire personnel to use the real property assessment division protometry of every taxman possible parcel in the county and other compatible databases of property maps, photos from the county IT system. And in closing, when a fire breaks out, immediately download the pictographs, aerial photos of every property involved, and use the information to identify buildings, resident location, access roads, water sources, to enhance response and containment should a fire break out. And in closing, conduct regular cost of government commission reports on fire preservation and cost. I'd like to extend a mahalo to the firefighters of Maui County. I'd like to extend a mahalo to my family, friends, and all the citizens of Lahaina Nui. I'd like to send my mahalo to two of my managers of two of the hotels that I broker, and thank them and my corporate office for housing my employees until, working with our owners, we could find our employees temporary housing so that their children may have some place to play, habitation of their own. Dave, Chris, mahalo Nui. And to our corporate office, mahalo Nui. To the Lahaina citizens, I feel you, because I am one of you. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Do we have any clarifying questions? Staff? Chair, the next testifier is Paul Pelkey, to be followed by Michelle Lincoln, Steve Arca, and then Veranda Nath.
My first time. I thought I have a background in construction development, heavy equipment. And I see such the lack of plan, zoning and planning. We make all these committees, we have so many people, but then if you don't properly zone, look where we're at. But then don't even think, you know, about when we say it's electric company. Think about all the utilities that hang off all of those poles. That spectrum, that's Verizon, they all share in these actions on what happened. So don't just go after them, because I was sitting at home just when it said, oh, internet will be on at 3 o'clock, internet will be on at 2 o'clock. They carry millivolts, and those millivolts, when hit with other voltage, then that gets more intense. I was right on Front Street, just last turn, Baker Street towering inferno, and still going to my front street of place. I can't even get into my place, so possibly they are saying November, December, because that's how bad my street apartment is. You guys wanted to buy it out. Now it's pretty much incinerated. They were hearing nothing for us people with disabilities. Janice had a disability rights, and the ombudsman, the private one with aloha care on the ohana care, and the state and federal, who was appointed for life by the executive branch, they should be inspected. I would have Congress Representative Jill Takuta and our congressmen sit up as a congressional committee, say, why were we cyberattacked in 2020? And in 2020, you know, with the county, Robert's buses, and Food Land. And it all came back to us. You have like, I think I know, you guys have 30 days by the Federal Trade Commission. Let us not attack you, but then we pay the ransom for it. Did it come within? Ace Hardware was manning up just to say it came from our corporate, and we traced it to Nigeria. Please report this to the police and the FBI. But then, that's what I wanted to say, just getting a feeling of all this right now. And this should happen at least once a year, because none of you people ever come over here and build a goddamn real resource here with aloha care and everybody over here, because that's what we need. Thank you very much. Mahalo.
Thank you. Please come up. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Michelle Lincoln, and I'm testifying behalf of myself. I didn't really prepare a speech, so I'm gonna kind of shotgun a few things. I read an interview from Alice Lee, and not to pick on Alice Lee, but it was in the Civil Beat on October 22. And I just want to clarify something. There was a comment in there that says, I don't think they're at the stage where they're thinking about house plans or anything like that. And I got to tell you, maybe the people you're talking to, but the people I'm talking to, and for myself who lost my home and rental properties that we had, we are ready to start drawing up plans, and you lose so much. You lose all this control. It's proactive. You feel like you're at least doing something and moving forward, and when you've lost everything and had four minutes to evacuate, like, to me, that's empowering. And so I know that if I feel that way, and the people I'm talking to that lost homes in our neighborhood, and friends and family that lost homes, I know that's how they feel too. So, and part of our thing is, we did get insurance, and we could hire someone, a draftsman, but we're kind of hesitating, because as long as you guys are projecting it can take two to three years before we can start building, my husband and I are too old to wait that long. Part of that was our retirement fund, and both of us never worked for employers where we get a retirement. Our retirement was to have long-term rentals. We always rented long-term and well under what the market rate was, and, you know, because I think that's the right thing to do, but that was our income. So if we can't start building in the next year, even though we have insurance, we can't afford to stay, because that's how we're gonna survive. So it needs to move faster. So you're saying, well, it's in maybe Army Corps of Engineer, or it's in FEMA's control, but you speak for us. So you could go to them and say, you know what, we need to start building in six months. We don't have to have everything done, but let us start building. And then they... if you run a business and you go, we want to have this done by a certain time, then you do what it takes to get it done by that certain time. It's a different mindset. Tom Cook, you've done contracting, you know how it works. So it's not them telling us, it's us telling them, we want to start doing it. And people like us that are ready to build, we'll charge forward and do it, and if our neighbor's not ready yet, fine, they can do it when they're ready, but you don't... the process can start, and we can give them deadlines. They give us deadlines, we can give them deadlines. We would like this done in six months so we can start moving forward. So that's one thing. Let me see. This meeting I happen to find out about, but I think there's got to be a better way, because old people like me aren't techie, we don't do Instagram and all that stuff. So I know people who are staying at the hotels and in places have to check in with the Red Cross regularly. Maybe you guys are gonna do a meeting, have the Red Cross say, go, hey, because this is not near as big a turnout as at the Westfin. So I think people just didn't know about it. I honestly think a lot more people would have shown up here. So I feel like maybe better communication for just everybody, because not everybody's techie and knows how to find out about that. Just quickly, Command May School is Bishop Estate with a property where the fire starts, but there's lots of vacant land around here. We need to start being proactive, like right now, about planting and irrigating. We don't... like, that can be done now. We don't have to wait for everything to get rebuilt, because we can rebuild everything and then the fire could happen again. So I think encouraging them to start irrigating and mitigating that fire-prone region, that's a priority. Oh, and we're talking about solvency, just a quick thing. I think that until... because they're neglecting their agriculture land. So if they're not gonna put agriculture on it, start taxing it...
Four minutes?
Commercial and residential rates, that's where you'll get your money at that we're missing right now. And then once those landowners start having to pay commercial or residential rates, because they're not using it for ag, then that's where you'll get your money. When they start doing ag and forestry and whatever, then they can go back to those rates. So I have other things, but those are my highlights, and I can send in testimony too, but...
Yeah, please send it to us.
But yeah, so those are... any questions?
Thank you so much. Members, do you have any questions? No? So thank you very much.
Chair, the next testifier, Steve Arca, to be followed by Veranda Nath and John Keemunka.
Hello, council. I just have a few questions. I am hearing from a lot of my neighbors. I'm up in Nepali, been there for 45 years. Everybody, all of Lahaina has moved up there. We love them, we're happy to have them, but we actually want to help. But a lot of what we're dealing with is people want to build ohanas so they can rent out their houses and get families in for people that are just, you know, they're retired and they don't need the whole house. But the permitting process on ohanas, the guidelines for ohanas, some of us are dealing with AOAOs that don't want us to do it, even though we have the land available. Some of our associations don't want us to do it for the same reason. But it comes down to, if we had an easing of the permitting process, had the okay from the county to let us be able to take and build ohana so we can bring people onto our property, that would really help. Also, with loans being at, going towards 9% right now, if we could get funding from state or federal through FEMA or Small Business Association so we didn't have to sell our retirement to help out, that would really help out also. The last thing I have is, if these ohanas, once all the dispersed, have been able to be accommodated back on their own properties, the problem we had pre-fire was not enough rentals for our... The problem we had pre-fire was not enough rentals for our housing, for our people that work in Lahaina and having them drive in every day to come to work. These would be properties that would solve our lack of rental properties at that time. So help us, help our neighbors. Help us do what we need to do to make sure that people have homes and we have a way of taking care of people that need something down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Barca, for your testimony. I just wanted to clarify when you said sometimes the AOAO does not allow to build an ADU or accessory dwelling unit. Were you saying for the council to make a law against the AOAO? Or I don't think we can supersede the AOAO. So I didn't understand what the connection between the AOAO not allowing it and what you want us to do.
Well, in my neighborhood, the association doesn't allow for them. So my neighbors go out and they build onto it to where we have 14 people living next door because houses just get pushed out to it. If we have something that's movable, let's say on a trailer, that's removable, so it's not considered a permanent structure. So there is ways, but it still comes down to us having the ability to finance it, to build it and to get it onto the property.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Staff, can you please call the next testifiers, please?
Chair, the next testifier is Veranda Nath to be followed by John Kinimaka, Erica Gastra and Kai McPhee.
Thank you. As we grieve for those who have perished, let's begin our healing by imagining what a new Lahaina town could become. We know that the reconstruction of Lahaina Town is going to cost somewhere between $10 and $20 billion and it'll take many years to complete. Let's do it right and leave our descendants with a town they can be proud of and a platform that they can build on. Here are four elements to a reimagined Lahaina Town. A memorial park on Front Street between Shaw Street and Papalua, 150 feet from the ocean's high watermark in accordance with the county's building statute and West Maui Comprehensive Plan, which has 3.2 feet sea level rise. Lahaina as the cultural capital of Hawaii. The commercially zoned areas between Papalua and Shaw to the highway should be designated as the cultural capital of Hawaii. I'll go into some of the things that can go into that. Double zoning the density of the residential zoned areas of Lahaina Town, including the areas Makai of the highway. Strict design guidelines in place so that the residential areas maintain conformity, beauty and green space. Our hills greened with fire-resistant and indigenous plants and trees to retard future wildfires. We are investigating the use of solar-powered seawater desalination to irrigate the fallow lands. We want to safeguard the aquifer and the stream water. These four ideas could create a Lahaina Town that would be resilient to future fire and be in attraction to visitors from Hawaii, the mainland and the Pacific Islands and form a base from which future generations can build on. Imagine, we drive to Lahaina Town, park our car in one of the large parking lots at the edge of town. There we are supplied with a smaller motorized vehicle, a golf cart, wheelchair, scooter, bicycle, and we continue our visit. We begin our visit at the memorial park along the ocean. There are non-permanent structures for food, for artists, for music, for carvers, for dance, and open-air theater for locally written and produced plays, and open-air theater films created and produced in Lahaina Town. We see non-permanent structures for healers and educators. Some of the historic Lahaina Town buildings have been rebuilt and there is a museum documenting our history. Next, to a revitalized harbor is an institute for marine studies and sea level rise, an institute to teach voyagers how to build seafaring canoes.
Three minutes.
Thank you. And to live on the ocean in a small canoe for weeks. At the ocean, the Hokulea and its associated voyaging canoes are anchored and the crews of the Hokulea are the teachers at the institute. If our visit is in the first two weeks of November, the memorial park hosts a hula festival modeled on the Merry Monarch Festival. Perhaps it could be a mid-year Merry Monarch Festival run by a committee that runs the Merry Monarch Festival in Hilo. There's so much we can do. We have the opportunity and the money. The money will come. It's going to cost $10 to $20 billion to do all this. Let's open our minds, open our hearts and think through building a town that future generations can build upon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One second, member Faton has a question for you. And do you also mind sharing your testimony with us?
Yes, I've given it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nath. I was wondering if you could clarify, I thought I heard you saying irrigate the landscape with seawater?
Yes. We're exploring that. What we're looking at is getting seawater, desalinating it using solar power and then putting irrigation lines all the way up into the fallow lands. We think this will take about, it's about a 20-year project because after 20 years, the trees and the grasses will be all green and the rainwater will take care of the rest.
So you said a 20? I mean, is that preferable to not redirecting the injection well water to irrigate the landscape?
No, it's not preferable, but the R1 water is not enough. We only have about a million and a half gallons per day of R1 water. Well, some of it, you know, the five million, a lot of it is already gone to the golf courses and other places. But when I talked to the Water Resources Commission, they said there's about a million and a half gallons left. We can talk about it more.
Thank you.
But just the five square miles up there is going to take about 3 million gallons per day. And the only way we can do it without affecting the aquifer or the streams is to desalinate the seawater. There's issues related to that that we're exploring, but it's going to take a while.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Chair, the next testifier is John Kinimaka to be followed by Erica Gastra, Kai McPhee and Shannon Ee.
Aloha, County Council, aloha, Lahaina. Community members, my name is John Kinimaka. I'm a community volunteer and first thing I want to cover about prevention would be, number one, our vibe, we need to restore our water. There's no reason why Lahaina should be so dry and Kauna Poli, all the resorts are being taken care of. Of course, as we all know, tourism is a priority here. Unfortunately, it shouldn't be that way, the people should be first. There's no reason why we should have that fire with all this dry brush and it needs to be green. We need to free the water up. Of course, the power poles is a low-brainer. They're ancient, we need to have underground, just like how Kauna Poli and Kapalua are green. Everything's underground, but our community, we got to suffer. Unfortunately, we don't want that anymore. But these people that are not managing the lands, they need to be held accountable. They need to be fined and I know they're going to get sued. Also, if they're not doing it, government should have a way to step in and eminent domain. These lands are not being maintained properly. Also, we should eminent domain some land right now so we can put our people on the land. We got tiny houses, but there's no place to put tiny houses. We got volunteers, we got people ready to swing hammers. We got people staying in our hotels, not knowing when's their last day, when they're going to be put out on the street. So we need to come up with something immediately right now for that. That's part of the recovery. Also, another thing I wanted to say is like, we should have more funding go for our fire department. And of course, well, fire department, I would like to see a fire department right there, a fire station, right there, ground zero, right where the fire started. You know, this is a national disaster, what they're calling it, the biggest thing in Hawaii. We should have a national training center for fire prevention, for wildfires, right here in West Maui. The fact that we are in an isolated area, we need to pay more attention because when we all started these hubs, we were isolated. There was no supplies coming in. We need to have these matting containers or pods or whatever already stockpiled, ready for disaster with everything. And I know, I'll give you a list of what we need, but we're going to need enough for at least like, to be comfortable to supply for everybody on West Maui for at least a month. And that's how long it seemed like it took until things kind of like got leveled out. So yeah, there's a lot of things we need to have. Volunteers are already trained, working with first responders. We have to have training for them so that they'll be prepared and it won't be chaos. You know, we couldn't even find a wall duct tape or traffic vest, you know, to get this thing going. And we want to make sure everybody's going to be safe when we have our hubs. And we want to make sure that we're already stockpiled and we have enough for however many people we need to cover on West Maui for a month. So we don't have chaos like we did.
Three minutes.
What else I need to cover? Covered a lot. Yeah, so I've covered everything I have to say, I think.
Thank you very much.
Did I leave anything out?
Wait, hold on, members, anybody have any questions? No, saying none. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Can we chat after? We're going to let her talk.
Hi, my name's Erica Gastra and I lost my home in the fire like 1,100 other. I displaced families and people. My question is, when can we fast track us getting back to our properties? There's no, there's no list. You just kind of have to sit around and wait for when your neighborhood gets called. And we all need to have closure and move on. I've had family, my sons have come out to visit and then one son moved back. And we're all, you know, wanting to go back to our family home. So I think there needs to be something posted. My mother can no longer live with us, so she had to go live with my younger brother. And so I can't make plans to go visit my mother because I want to be part of going back to my property. So I think there needs to be a fast track for that. You know, it's our property. I understand we want to be respectful to the culture and to our neighbors, but it needs to be a little quicker. We all need closure. The next thing is might not, it's low on the totem pole, but we need to fast track opening the Lahaina Product Center. All our families like to use the pool. We have lots of families and kids that need to recreate there as well as we have a very robust Lahaina swim team. And the Lahaina Lunatic High School swim team can't work out. The wonderful water polo team, our girls are amazing. They're not going to be able to have a season. So I really think that it might be low on the totem pole, but I think for the community, for the athletes, that we can get this pool scrubbed and put back to place. Hopefully, it'll be safe with the water for the kids to return and the families to return. So if we could put that a little higher on the priority, that would be great for the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Members, any clarifying questions? Saying none, staff, can you please call the next few testifiers? Chair, the next individual to testify is Kai McPhee to be followed by Shannon Ee, Joanne Johnson-Winer and then Allison Daniel.
Thank you. Hello, can you hear me? Aloha, my name is Kai. I came here to testify today mainly because I miss my community a lot and I just wanted to talk to them. And I wanted to talk about what seems like an inevitable reality that is starting to present itself. And that is us as a community kind of going back to business as usual. I've lived in Lahaina my whole life. Pretty much every job I've ever had has been somehow related to tourism. My parents built several businesses here, most of them related to tourism. And over the last especially 10 years or so, it just feels like we've developed a really unhealthy relationship with tourism. And you know, it's like these major things that have happened, COVID and now this, where we even had the opportunity to take a breath and see that and let it sink in. When it happened during COVID, it was so unusual because nobody had ever seen the island without tourism. And we as a community had time to process that and say, wow, we really got ourselves into kind of a deep mess here with the tourism industry just kind of going like this, year after year after year. And it was landing on our shoulders to pick up that slack year after year after year. It became very unhealthy for us and it became very unhealthy for the visitor as well. And we all saw it. We saw the degradation of the visitor experience just before the fire. If you walked down Front Street, it was not the place, it wasn't the street that I grew up on. It became very dirty. There was no soul in the town. There was no opportunity for our community to participate in the economy down there. You know, you guys saw the shops that were down there. They weren't cute boutiques that were showcasing our beautiful culture. And that's not a good experience for the visitor either. So I would hope that in this situation, we'd have the opportunity to just kind of put a foot down this time and say, look, we want to change this. We want to diversify our economy now. We want to live here and thrive for ourselves. And what better thing for a visitor to come and experience? That's the kind of place that I want to go visit, is people thriving in their culture, not existing solely for the visitor. So what's hard to see though is what mechanism exists to stop this inevitable momentum that has already started? We asked very coherently together as a community, look, we're not ready for October 8. And it wasn't about October 8, October 10, November 1st, December 2nd. It was arbitrary. It was just saying, look, we have a voice that we want to be heard right now. What say you? And not you, but they said, no, we won't listen at all. So what is that mechanism that we have right now to enact any kind of change at all, enact our will in any way whatsoever? I wish I had an answer. I just wanted to talk that out and talk to my community about that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions? Thank you. Chair, the next individual to sign up is Shannon Ee to be followed by Joanne Johnson-Winer, Allison Daniel and then Ulrich Kirkhardt.
Aloha, my name is Shannon Ee. Born and raised Lahaina and generational Ohana directly affected by the August 8 wildfire. Speaking on grade 14. So fire mitigation, hold private landowners accountable to that. And if not, we should be finding them. Long-term, how will you help Ohana with relieving that stress of finding long-term housing in our neighborhoods and not in hotels? There's many short-term rentals that are open, that sit vacant, available to us. How, also, how will you help rebuild homes? Because many people are in the predicament where, my mom shared this with me today, that their insurance will not cover the cost of build. And so how can we help with that? Maybe self-help, I'm not really sure. Septic tank cost on Fleming and Wahikuli Road is a struggle. Is it possible to get hooked up to that county line? Extend the moratorium of eviction and rent raise and not only extend it, but enforce it? I think a lot of things that we've been asking for, things can be put into place but are not being Um, I think a lot of things that we've been asking for, things can be put into place but are not being enforced. Um, so we are in a disaster so profound, yet we are struggling to live day by day when the state continues to care for tourists rather than the local people. Um, we have, we are the servants of this place, we're the working class, um, who struggle day in and day out, and we have not seen a single thing done in the best interest of our community. The state has continued to fill their pockets and support corporations that have performed mass genocide, and we're making decisions on the fly, um, still are actually, only because tourism was opening up. Say for instance, schools, right? Schools opened up kind of the same time that tourism was opening up. And I think, I mean, that, that was kind of ridiculous. Um, sorry. Areas in their mall opened up so that recreational activities could, could continue for tourists. If we're talking about a plan, water needs to be at the top of the list. Um, I know you're not in the committee to bring it to, but uh, we need more than twenty-five percent access to water in Lahaina. Makatu Makai's stream flow is pertinent, um, you know, if we're thinking about building, we can't do anything without water. Um, we can't be resilient, right? We're talking about resiliency and comprehensive plan, but we can't be resilient if there's all these stresses and worries um, on top of our, our hearts. Lahaina has been pouring into the state economy for many years. It's time for the state to pour into us. Like, we literally provide the state billions of dollars, millions and billions of dollars. Like Lahaina is one of the biggest, um, you know, part of that. Uh, so money shouldn't be an issue. Mokuula and Moko Mokuhia restoration so that Kihamu Bahine may return to thisaina. I would like to see that we have cultural significant places, um, not just for Hawaiians, Filipinos, Tongans, Samoans. We are a diverse community, um, so we, we need to have that, that diversity.
Three minutes.
Um, we need better road infrastructure, I mean, we, we see that as it is. And most, especially just accountability, making sure that no matter what is being talked about, we can have all these committees and we can do all these things, but what is being done? We can say all these things, but it needs to be enforced and things need to be done for the community, that's all.
Thank you. Can you please um, email that to us so that we can have your notes? Thank you so much. Aloha.
Aloha, thanks so much for coming to Lahaina and I'd like to thank all the people too for coming, even though sometimes there's not enough hours in the day to get it all done. Uh, Joanne Johnson-Winer, and I'm speaking on behalf of the West Maui Hospital Foundation. I am now officially the president of the foundation. I used to be vice president, but we have new people coming onto our board. One of the most important things to our community is to have some place where they can go to receive healthcare. We lost Maui Medical Group, we lost the Kaiser uh, clinic. We have little services now that are inadequate. You cannot keep asking people month after month, year after year, to take an ambulance ride when they need critical services to go to the other side. We should have had this hospital built a long while ago. We have many kapuna that have passed away and a lot of them, you know, Meifu, Jibara, George, you know, a number of people that if they were still here and they would have survived the fire, I know that they would have spoken out on behalf of the hospital because they were some of the individuals that, that did not live to see it. I want to have these people see that out of the ashes and out of this horrific tragedy, that we can build a memorial to all those people. And that memorial will be a hospital that will be a tribute, not just to the lives that were lost in the fire, but to all the lives that have been lost all over the years from people who could not make it to the other side in an ambulance. That is not medical care. That is putting our people at risk, it cannot continue. Jill Takuta has been very helpful at the federal level. She's doing everything she can to get US Department of Agriculture to get our project moving again. We were poised, as many of you know, to have the council act as a guarantor for the special purpose revenue bond, which we were able to get from the state of Hawaii. Angus McKelvey and basically um, Ellie Cochran were the people who helped move that forward. That was critical to us. But one of the things we need, we need a twenty million dollar special purpose revenue bond guarantor. And you guys hold the first strings, so I'd love it if you guys could just do a simple resolution, just saying, we will be the guarantor for that bond. I know the mayor's on board, I know you guys are on board. And if that's all it takes in order for us to move forward with that bond, I'm all for it. The other thing that we desperately need is we need US
Three minutes.
We need US Department of Agriculture, who basically have told us, this is not a priority right now. I totally disagree. They have called a halt to everything, they have not returned my calls. Jill Takuta is trying to get them off of, you know, this whole philosophy of, of the, the timing isn't right. That's just not going to work anymore. So we need to move this. And if all the voices in this room, the voices that are out there that can hear this, please let everyone know how important it is, not just for the recovery and the resiliency, but the future of Lahaina, the rebuilding of our community. And we cannot do it the way that we did it before, we have to have a hospital. And I am not going to let this go.
Four minutes.
I am here and I'm going to see it through. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, any questions? Thank you. Staff, next testifier, please.
Chair, the next testifier is Allison Daniel, to be followed by Ulrich Kerkhard. Kekei Kiaki and Paele Kiyakona.
Hi, everyone, thank you so much for being here tonight. Um, my name is Allison Daniel. I have been very privileged living Lahaina for the last, to live and work in Lahaina for the last twelve years. I am a teacher at Lahaina Intermediate. I was also privileged to be able to afford a one-bedroom apartment at Channel House on Front Street a year and a half ago. I have a ten-year-old son. A few weeks before the fire, because of the prevalence, prevalence of the homelessness in Lahaina, had asked me, Mom, will I ever be homeless? I don't know where I'm going to stay after Sunday, but I know I'm going to be okay. I know there's a lot of people in this building who don't know where they're going to stay after the end of this month. So I'm one and very thousands of people who are stressed about where they're going to lay their head next month and the month after. My students are trusting that I and my staff and the Department of Education and you and the government are looking out for their health. I'm not sensitive to a whole lot, but a couple days ago with the Kona winds, I had dry mouth. And I agree that everyone in this building is ready to get the cleanup started ASAP. People need to get back to their land, back in their homes. Home for my students are those campuses up the hill. That is their new home. And they and their parents, thank you. They and their parents need to feel comfortable and safe sending their children to school. So when the cleanup starts, my question is, where are the four campuses going to go? And I like to be solution-based because I'm a teacher and I want to find solutions. And so I'm curious if anybody has considered the school that's being built below the Kapluu Airport to be able to have the capacity to have K through twelve? Because most of the people on the west side are Kaanapali and north.
Three minutes.
Would be convenient for the kids to just be bused right there below the airport. And the parents and families would probably feel much safer. Our kids would feel much safer. And our kids deserve that, they have been through. You know, they've been through so much. Some of them don't have shoes. I had a student crying because he didn't have paper. They are unbelievably overstressed. And they look down the hill and they no longer see their house. The least we can do is find a safe place for them to go when the cleanup starts. Thank you, everyone, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Next testifier, please, thank you.
Next testifier is Ulrich Kerkhard, to be followed by Kekei Kiaki, Paele Kiyakona, and Irene Mcfee.
That's a good locker. I'd probably find, aloha, believe me, in Kano, so, thanks for being in Lahaina again. Um, I'm Ulian, it's Ulrich, but everybody called me Ulian for over twenty years here in Hawaii. And uh, it's not the fifth time that we've been evacuated here while living in Lahaina. Um, if you always say, oh, we'll be back, kind of got used to it, you know, we get evacuated and we'll be back. So we, nobody ever takes anything because we'll always be back. This time was obviously different, so we lost our house, uh, and we lost also our business at five oh five Front Street. And um, you know, I took a couple notes there, but look at them. Um, I think one of the things that is really critical here is we never learned anything from Hurricane Lane in two thousand and eighteen and somehow we let this happen. I know that there was some report and there is in the news, uh, maybe some evidence of a report that was created, uh, maybe never really manifested to any productive measurements being taken to sort of avoid this situation again. And um, you know, and also another thing is that what we did when we created the bypass, we chopped the community of Lahaina Luna in half. And then we ended up instead of having three roads going through, we only have one Lahaina Luna left. And so we used to live up Lahaina Luna and every time there was something, we had to really call it early and say, oh, we've got to get going, otherwise we're going to get stuck over here, right? So for people to evacuate Lahaina Luna and just having one road to get out of, really uh, we lost two extra roads going through the community when the bypass was built. And I know that there, when we sent the kids back to school, we created some temporary evacuation routes that it technically goes past those fields that burns. So I'm not sure that those evacuation routes are really good enough. We gotta, we gotta do better for those free schools and that community up there, that's for sure. Um, being originally from Denmark and Europe, I have had a vision that we could even, instead of having thousands of cars going up there, create some kind of system. It could even be like a ski lift, a cable car, a bus or something that helps them go up there to alleviate traffic. That's a futuristic plan, but since Lahaina area is pretty much wide open, something to consider to have an alternative way to get those kids up and down and have um, some community-based transportation that, that takes the kids up and down from the schools. Um, also, we should have just put these electric lines in the ground. Um, not sure if that was really what, because it seems that it was. And um, also the fire hydrants didn't properly work because the electricity was cut and the fire hydrants rely on water that is pumped to them. So we
Three minutes.
Need to fix that. And also, we have a shop at five oh five and the sirens at five oh five never worked. For several years they haven't worked. So we've been calling everybody and they are, on state level, they said, well, we have no funding to fix the siren. It needs a whole new, you know, siren and there was no money for it. So for over two years, the siren at five oh five, it's right next to K free school, doesn't work. And me, it's just mind-blowing. So even if we had pulled those sirens, it would never have said anything because it didn't work. So something to be fixed, for sure, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair, the next testifier is Kekei Kiaki, to be followed by Paele Kiyakona, Irene Mcfee, and Dr. Vijak Ayasananda.
Usually I'm not writing things down, I just shoot from the hip. Uh, I'm likely sure I'm not going to miss anything, anyway. The use of R1. Um, we have the ability to use R1 in a way that will actually replenish our aquifers by not drawing that amount of R1 that we can utilize from the ground and build our aquifers. And I think it's around five million gallons, I could be wrong, I did that reproducing R1 law. Again, I, I'm probably repeating myself, but that's five million gallons a day that we live in the ground. That's thirty-five billion gallons a week, that's one thousand eight hundred twenty million gallons a year we live in the ground. And so in order to increase our storage of water within the ground, these are the things that we got to look at. Um, it's been mentioned that we bring in a brand-new water line into all of the homes. Yeah? Putting dual meters into our homes, one for drinking with the new lines, the old lines will go to R1. The old lines are already tied into the parks, tied into our homes that can go to irrigation, uh, can go to farming. The new lines dedicate solely for drinking and our homes. It's not impossible. Um. Second thing, especially in places that has cesspool, cesspools, like Waikouli, a majority of the homes in Waikouli are cesspools. If you apply for a permit, you mandated to put a septic system in if you are on a cesspool. Okay, you're looking at fifty, sixty grants, there's not accounted for within your insurance. Nobody can build their home. Okay? We need an exemption for time being, uh, to a lot of people to remain on a cesspool and to the county bring in the infrastructure to get these people on a sewer lines. This was promised to Waikouli a long time ago. I like say it's close to three decades and it still hasn't happened. A lot of times the government has the ability, they lack the will to see it through. The will is here today. Um, secondly, even depend, depending on your, your household log. I have a friend whose mom has a three-bedroom house and a two-bedroom Ohana in the back. She's on cesspool. If she has to put a septic system in, the leach field will take up the area that will take up where the two-bedroom cottage is at. She depends on that as supplemental, a supplemental for her, her, her retirement. Some people use that supplemental for their mortgage. We lose housing, we lose, yeah, because of the, because of the
Three minutes.
Leach field, and then we lose, I mean, we spending money on a cesspool that can take away from us building our homes. Um, almost all. Uh. Remind me. Oh, desalination, when I hear the word desalination, I cringe. Because that's like we living beyond our means. I do not go to a shopping, uh, grocery store and buy a hundred-dollar worth of groceries, but I only have five dollars in my pocket. When we looking at desalination, we have grown beyond the means of this island to sustain itself. And there's something for except, but you know what? Seventy-seven percent of the water resource on the west side is controlled by private purveyors. Twenty-two percent is controlled by the county. What we doing right now is having, making a push to get back that seventy-seven percent of the water resource, put back into public control. It is a public resource. If we want to talk desalination, let the hotels go do desalination, let them pay for it, because that's expensive. They have lived a gluttonous life down at the hotels, because they have all the water they like. They do whatever like we don't, we go on restrictions, we need to pay the fines. So let them pay for the desalination. So let them pay for the desalination for their hotels and resorts and swimming pools. Don't put it on the people. Give us back our water resource that is a public resource. Take it away from these private purveyors. Last, and I'm Ariya. I just came from a water commission meeting yesterday. Great turnout, huge turnout. Make this look like a potluck. If you guys like getting more people here like we did at the western, notify Lahaina Strong. And I guarantee we're not going to have enough chairs in this place. If you like really hear from the people, get in contact with the people, and bring the people here. Okay? Game. Okay, everyone.
We have a couple of questions for you. One second. Member Polken, followed by Member Johnson D. Oh, okay, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to clarify about the sewer at Waikouli and what you were saying about temporary hookup to the cesspool until the sewer come in. When we talked to the director, he was saying because of the slope of the, um, the hill that they might need easement across people's backyard and stuff. So just clarifying, would the preference be to rehook up to the septic or just straight go to the sewer right away while all the team is decimated?
I know putting a sewer system don't take a while, but that shouldn't hinder the build, and that's why we're looking for exemption to go back to the cesspool. If we never have the fine homes, we're still there, the sewer system will be going in with the homes in place. Now, understanding a lot of the layout there, I only talked to a handful of people, maybe less than ten, and I asked them, if we had to go through people yards, creating easement in order to get your sewer lines through the sewer system, what do you guys think about that? And they said, well, at least that allows them to build a home. They don't have to put in a septic system. It doesn't take away from the ohana that they could build. That supplemental income for retirees or for people in mortgages is important, and yet that ohana also provides home, which we already shot in. And so these are things that we got to think about and push. I say this over and over again. If you can build a rail in Honolulu, you can put some pipes in the ground in Lahaina.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Kiyahi, for your testimony. I got a clarifying question in regards to the wastewater. You might have seen in my committee, the depths committee, we had Bill Fifty-two, which was cleaning the wastewater to R1 standards. In your testimony, you mentioned residential use. Was there any other uses that you would be amenable to? Is that only you want to go for residential?
No, no, no.
Bag or anything else?
So the R1 we talking about, right?
R1, yeah.
So R1, residential, not for drinking, guys. We're not going to drink that. Okay? I know in some places they do R zero five. We're not going to do that here because we have the ability to drink good water.
Right.
But, you know, for irrigation purposes of our homes, our parks, but also farming. So the Launio Koko district, I mean, aquifer has a sustainable yield of seven million gallons. We're using ninety-five percent of that seven million gallons. We're producing probably five million gallons or so. If we bring Waikouli online into the sewer system, we may provide between a half a million to another million gallons of sewage that can be converted. We can move up to seven million gallons a day is what we using in Lahaina right now just for drinking water. So that takes us having to pump out of the ground. It's too. R1 water is cheap. We don't pay the same price for R1 water as we do for drinking water. So people's costs go down.
So if I'm hearing you, you would support it going for agriculture and other uses?
Yes, and like I said, for the community first, agriculture, parks before the resource.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, thanks. I just wanted to clarify also on the R1 water. When you say residential reuse for a single-family home, are you envisioning that to be like irrigation or like within the one house, the toilet water is the R1 water? And so irrigation and toilet water, is there more stuff within the single-family home? Because I think that might be state law or the Department of Health to amend. But what are their uses for the R1 in the single-family house?
Uh, I wouldn't go, I mean, probably the most. The toilets, not so much showering with them, but for sure irrigation. Um, I know maybe Conapali, of course, I think they're probably using R1, I'm not sure. I think they are. But it is a resource that we should take advantage of. Not, I mean, I don't want that R1 water to be monopolized by the resource and then it takes it away from the community and then now we back to where we was. If the resource like water, you get the money to desell your water. The rest of that water that is a public trust by law should not be controlled. Seventy-seven percent of that should not be controlled by private purveyors, period. And at the water commission meeting, it was made clear by almost every single person in that room. Like I said, they'll make this look like a potluck. And everybody said the exact same thing. We need to bring it back into public control so that it really benefits the community as a law, states it should be. So it's kind of where is that? Oh, I had plenty of clarifying questions as well. It was fucking funny thing.
Wait, hold on. Yeah, one more. Go ahead, Member Polken.
Thank you. My clarifying, my clarifying question. If I can get, if you can get it right. Can I talk louder? Okay, thank you. My clarifying question. Anyway, what you saying is right on. Hopefully can get in writing and that. But as far as the neighborhoods, one of the things for the sewer to be hooked up is what you touched upon, which was the easements. So that's one thing that people in the communities can start doing now, is if they communicate and have a huli and have an understanding and basically reach out to the departments and go, this isn't a problem. Don't think this is going to be a problem. We can and will work with you. Because what you're saying is true. It's like all of that resource is available. We just have to manage it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so as far as the easements, we already get setbacks, right? If you're going to build on one-story house, you're going to six-foot step back, uh, six-feet step back, a setback. Two-story, ten-feet setback. So there is that area where we cannot build anyway that we have the ability to put these lines in. And like I said, it's a small group, and then maybe we should have that meeting and have that conversation. I mean, we gotta be here, but we can't do them ourselves. Lahaina Strong can't set that meeting up. And let's really talk about these issues. And so when we come here, we all talk in the same way. Yeah? So with the handful of people I spoke with, they was all understanding that, yeah, you know, that'd be a great solution. So I kind of want to move past, I'm not saying we should forget, but we got to move to solutions and we got to move. And so, again, people, the government has the ability, but we got the will. So you got to continue to fight and push. Hello, you guys.
Thank you very much.
I dropped somebody's microphone.
I think just the fluffy stuff came off. Next. Chair, the next testifier is Paila Kiacona, to be followed by Irene McPhee, Dr. Vijak Ayasananda, and DeAndre Tapahashi.
Hello, Council. Paila Kiacona, one of the Lahaina Strong organizers, so I guess I would be the guy to talk to, to help, uh, set up meetings with a bigger turnout. DeAndre as well behind you. But, um, you know, I come here echoing, echoing the voice. Many people here echoing the voice of our ina. And as we all know, water is the lifeblood of our island. Yet despite Maui's, the West Maui mountains being some of the wettest in the world, the pockets of our community still go without basic, this basic necessity due to corporate entities like West Maui Land Company drinking our ina dry from the blue and filling their pockets with the green. I propose to make it a requirement that every private entity and waterway be integrated with our county water lines, guaranteeing that no community and no region and no individual is ever deprived again. As our islands continue to attract visitors, it becomes vital to rethink and diversify our tourism industry. Currently, our reliance on tourism leans heavily towards an extractive model that takes more than it gives back to our ina. By focusing on regenerative type of tourism, deeply rooted in Hawaiian culture and Hawaiian traditions, we can shift that paradigm. By offering a more holistic and authentic Hawaiian experience, we not only enhance the quality of our tourists, but also boost the economy and revitalize our ina at the same time. Such an approach not only safeguards our culture, but also combats the underlying reason our town burnt down in the first place. On this topic of resiliency, our decision for this hasty reopening of the schools near the burn zone deserves a lot more of a closer look. We only need to reflect on nine eleven to realize that sometimes the aftermath can be more catastrophic than the incident itself. There are over a hundred and ten thousand individuals now enrolled in the World Trade Center Health Program due to health complications. So we must tread very carefully. The recent meeting held, I believe it was on the sixteenth, October sixteenth, where Dr. Pang and you have the other speaker highlighted that certain particulates are undetectable by the EPA's instruments. So this is deeply concerning, especially when our Kiki's health are at risk. Furthermore, on this hasty reopening, our phase reopening, basically jumping from phase one to three, our communities' voices should be amplified even more. So that being said, now that they are going to be displaced even more from these hotels, the provisions of Waikouli revised Statute 127A-12C empowers the mayor to convert vacation rentals into long-term housing, gives him that power.
Three minutes?
And as this discussion to ban vacation rentals from Maui gain traction, initiating this transformation can be a significant first step. Prioritizing housing for our local communities, families, and reallocating the funds that was proposed to go to families for housing those who are displaced, and we can put it back into an idea like this. So, you know, this is a very pivotal time for our community here and not just here, across the state. So it's time for this change. Pono will always prevail. And I asked the Water Commission the same question yesterday. This is all history in the making, so I ask you, what side of history do you want to be on?
Thank you very much. Members, do we have any clarifying questions? Saying none, thank you very much.
Everyone, stay listen to us. The only one community, community meeting at the Ritz, we have hold one today. Um, at ten o'clock this morning, pretty informative, but good stuff. Lucky in your cheek, there's smart buggers behind you. I'm just a long guy, just think to get started. I get basically kind of close on my team. Tomorrow we get one on each. So I think one in the morning, one at night. Tomorrow we have one at five o'clock at the Ritz. Mahalo to the Ritz, opening up the ballroom. This one hasn't today. This one wasn't quiet. This one was only two hundred fifty-two show up. This one was opening up to everybody. So again, guys, let me know, sure, tomorrow I told the Ritz, we're not coming. Come on and come listen to us. What we get, they will put pressure on the government. Uh, opening the ears, because in the beginning, when the president came over here to the singing building, it was greeted by all, everybody, including our mayor. Community-driven, communities, government-supported, but without the freaking goddamn government support, nothing.
Chair, you have a question.
Oh, you ready?
Jena.
Yo.
What would you like the council to do?
Huh?
What would you like us to do?
Oh, well, the thing I hear, the one, the also, the chairman, the council one, council person that could help us, that's why I go here, this all. So maybe you guys, that you guys all work together. Go call them right off, tell them, hey, come listen to us, go call me up. You guys all give my number. You guys can take my email. You guys know what I meant, so that's what I like you to do. Come here and meet with us. Let's go.
Okay, so all I was asking is, maybe we can tell story about what your project is all about, because I haven't heard about it.
Yeah, um, well, maybe, you know, if it's possible, I have been. It's out there. So don't tell me, you know, I can't do that here, man. Huh? Woo, it's like eating Hawaiian school.
Okay, thank you, X. Chair, the next individual to testify is Jerry Nelsratus, to be followed by Christine Rubbe, Danielle Brown, and Elijah Palamarchi. Thank you.
Hello, Council, all here. Hey, thank you guys who come to Lahaina. When you guys take a look at the wall behind here, it's out there. For now, we watch Jenny testify. Everything you guys proposing, everything that the state and county is doing right now is in favor for tourism. You get the thing sign out there. No more one local person out there. Yeah. He says, fly in, it's the city center. No more market, this is all for tourists. What the heck are you doing? It's just not for us. I'm stuck in a resort that I don't want to be at. The tourists don't want me there. I got relocated from one room to another because the tourists were complaining. They wanted a closer room to the ocean. So I had to move my room. My white sign is smashed. He has three things in his hand. There are three dogs. There are nowhere to go. What you guys doing for us? It's the second house. He's listening. He's frustrated. What you guys doing? You guys got to be there. So what is the action? First of all, demand a higher tax rate for all the state owners. That's first and foremost. Mandate a higher tax rate for all the state owners. Yeah? We don't have a housing crisis, gang. We don't. We have an ownership issue. How is anybody allowed to buy multiple units without paying a higher tax rate? You guys got the president for the director, for the board of directors, and Muno Akai buying out six additional units after a fire because they did not want any displaced residents near him. We have people with the masters dating community in, uh, Ukulani, uh, Ukulani, Waikouli, Conapali, Hoosai, that bought out units so that no displaced residents would be around him. All I think is that on us, tax default. Tax them so that they don't want to buy in Maui, so that we have opportunity to buy housing for our residents. For your guys' needs, your guys' identity. Now, I can point out the three council members, the four development last time. You guys pass these things, developments, and not holding them accountable. So, Muno Akai, uh, the western man here, and the Kala, when they was a fool, they were supposed to build an elementary school and they were supposed to put in the infrastructure, the sewer system, and they never did, and the county council never held them accountable for that. Why is that? Why have you guys not held these companies, developers, accountable for what they accomplished? Yeah? Okay, going with Kai Kai, tie the sewer system in Waikouli, yeah? We cannot afford to build houses if we have to put in steel. The county was supposed to do this. I believe twenty-five, I believe twenty, fifteen years ago, you guys did a budget construction to put in sewer lines of Waikouli and planning road and to tie that off, those houses in. But we still not tie. But we still not tied it, so how we gonna afford more housing for the residents? Now, see where, here's the question, I know you guys not see where, but I want to just do this out here for county council. We are army leaders, we're setting the way the smallest of the world. West Maui only has a family, I believe, frankly, from now, also, about thirty, thirty-five thousand residents. Alright?
Four minutes.
Now, how come Oahu has over a million people and they have a water restriction? How we have a water restriction, it's tough, it's time, I believe, in my lifetime, that we never get a water restriction in West Maui. How is that? You guys need to mandate that these private water containers tie into the county system. It's unfair. You guys drive around, when you guys go through someone's house, as soon as you guys pass the city center, all the horses is green, all the resorts is green, Laniopoko is green. That is unfair, God, why my, my nieces, nephews, you guys' daddy's daughter's cost on dead bodies? That's horrible, yeah? We don't even have any money. Why are we not providing mental health? Why you guys putting up so much loophole that private practice therapists cannot come into West Maui and support the people? Why are we not talking about the suicide that is happening in West Maui? Because of the frustration that we face from the people that supposed to protect us. You guys work for us, the mayor works for us, the governor works for us. And it has been proven, when we brought in fourteen thousand six signed petitions, that the governor said, F you, I don't care, money more important, corporate greed is more important than the livelihoods of the displaced residents. We forcing kids to go back to school in unsafe situation so that parents can go back to work, that's all it is. Has nothing to do with education. Nothing to do with education. If I were to be tired and go back to work today at the high school, I would turn that job down in a heartbeat because that place is unsafe. And if it's unsafe for adults, the hell you guys giving is safe for the kids? You guys should be mandating that the governor shut down those schools, provide a safe place for them. There's no way in hell, what if you guys' grandkids was going to that school, they was made whatever to that school, your kids? Would you guys allow that? Let's be real about this. Let's be honest, would you guys allow your kids, your mother, your nieces and nephews, would you allow them to go back to that campus? Hell no. Why are we making this displaced community force their kids back? It's an outrage. And you guys should demand the mayor to put a line in the sand and say, you know, no, F you. We handle our own, we don't take care of our children. Give us the support, give us the law, let us manage our people. That's what it should happen. Last but not least, demand the mayor to HRS one two seven eight dash twelve C to shut down short-term rentals. We have over two thousand residents in that area. We can open that up for housing for this year, it's not longer. Look, gang, we're not gonna build for three years. There is no way in hell we can build within three years. How the hell I gonna find housing for that long? How these people gonna find housing? How we gonna find unsafe space for housing? We cannot. We depending on you guys to move appropriately with the community input to make the best decision for us, we demanding that from you guys, you guys elected for that reason. Now fulfill up the pockets of these corporations. That is your guys doing, to protect us, to help us. And if you guys do that, I stand shoulder to shoulder with you guys any day. You guys go there and stop, we're going to call it tall. We going, we going.
Five minutes.
You guys gonna have a hard time, because we gonna get together and we looking nice. Thank you so much for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, we have a question. Say nine.
Oh, she got it.
She got it. We're gonna have to.
I tell you guys for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, one second, I'm gonna call a quick recess for a bio break. Okay, one second, one second, one second. Okay. The great committee is not recess until seven thirty PM. Well, the great committee, whose reconvene is seven thirty-three. I forgot to gather them, I gotta gather them before I start doing that, okay. Staff, could you please call our next testifier? Chair, the next testifier is Christine Rebby, to be followed by Daniel Brown, Elijah Cala McShane, and Ho'oponopono. Can you hold on to their names? Christine Rebby? Rebby? Real quick, before she begins, we did turn off the AC so we could hear you better. If it does get a little bit hot, um, we can open some of the doors. Thank you.
Aloha, my name is Christina Rebby. Thank you guys for being here and receiving all of my voices. I remember it's past year takes to open and be here and to receive us. Um, and make the communication between all of you, nobody, the line, the media, the public, and the staff, and the company going forward. So as to the recovery process of Lahaina, I'm asking you to please treat Lahaina as you would a lady. Do not touch her if she's not asking to be touched. That clear. The way you show respect is to ask first. And before you ask, you need to gauge if it's even appropriate to ask. If you decide to touch a lady when she is clearly saying no and that she does not consent to being touched, you will be considered a sexual financial predator of this ina, and you will be held accountable by the law of life. There's a stark difference between consent culture and rape culture. And I pray that we all arm ourselves with the knowledge and education of consent. I request that there be a mandatory online education workshop for every political leader or person part of their recovery process before taking another step forward. This is the center of one of the most sacred sources of unity of the remnants of the Hawaiian Kingdom among much else that burned in the fires. The true governance of this land as it lives in ruins, whether honored or not. The Hawaiian Kingdom is what is established by God for this land. And it is wise to listen to its voice, no matter how burned down it is. One thing is for sure, Lahaina will not be further raped, exploited, and controlled by colonialism. How do you expect people to represent themselves when they are living in survival mode? You have not heard the voices of the people of this land because they are in survival mode. They do not have the resources that they deserve. You have not heard their voices because they are destabilized right now. And before you guys decide on any action going further, you pause and you listen and you support those voices before you continue on. If anyone wants to adjust their family's generational curses for living in wrong relationship to the land and to the Hawaiian Kingdom, this is an opportunity to give back what is stolen and respect the Hawaiian Kingdom going forward and to be in right relationship as it lives on and grows back to full expression as phoenix from the ashes. Lahaina will be respected and treated as a lady of the land in totality.
Five minutes.
No predators are allowed. All predators are spit out. We will not be stepped on ever again. Do not step on us. So we may welcome everyone in cover you and be in right relationship with one another. I got this tattoo in Lahaina. This tattoo is of a lotus flower in Lahaina. This is a tattoo of a lotus flower. The Hawaiian Kingdom and the deep cultural meaning of Lahaina stands eternally, whether we recover it or not. And it will continue to fight until it is recovered. As to the entirety of the recovery of Lahaina and forever going forward, there are three terms I give you with consent, respect, and kaput. Mahalo.
Thank you very much, members, do you have any questions? Thank you, guys, thank you so much. The next testifier is Daniel Brown, to be followed by Elijah Cala McShane, Ho'oponopono, and Mikey Burke.
Aloha, council. First, I want to say, I have forty-two year message in Lahaina, raised all four of my children here, they've gone to all four of the schools in this district. And this loss is inconceivable to me. Um, I wanted to thank, I believe it was County Councilman Republican who did relief for people with property. When people say, are you listening, are you taking any actions, I wanted to acknowledge something specific. It was brought up at the last meeting, was a request, they couldn't get to their house, lost their homes, we're still praying to the prophet that if the council is taking action, I want to acknowledge that before I do anything else, because otherwise it'd be a waste of my time. And if you couldn't do anything, so I want to say thank you to all of you, and I'm assuming that all of you are nodding your heads, that you're voting with her and are supporting her in this effort, that takes its unanimity there. I've heard mentioned something I didn't know about, I was here for the fires in twenty eighteen, and by recollection, this is exactly where the fire jumped here, the same ground, the same grass, the same everything, nothing changed. I drive that road frequently, many of us do. None of the twenty, I didn't know about the twenty twenty-one, it wasn't wide, the advertised recommendations about the fire, brilliant. I don't know if any action is taken period on any of those, and I really think that it should be taken immediately, and you know, people say cost and everything, and we heard a lot of that last time about how much did this cost? It would be pennies on the dollar if we expect the money to do that, and you know, I have been, I have seen landowners, neighbors, fortunate, they're there Kama Poli Hillside, by the A'ao'ao, when you grass that too called, they, or they didn't do it, the A'ao'ao Association voted. You know, things happen, it's possible to do that, and there's landowners that did not do their due diligence, did not take care of their responsibilities, and no one helped their people with the fire's doing, so I'd like to see that changed. Already been talked about, I wanted to know last time it was mentioned that there were going to be bioprene models possibly with fast track permitting. I have many other houses, the person's not here, but want to make sure that doesn't drop off the radar, because I think it's a brilliant idea. Also, I know someone, I talked to someone who's one of my neighbors at my warehouse from my businesses, who lost this home in twenty eighteen, rebuilt and lost again. And he has, he has plans right now, rebuild from those, but if he has to go through two and a half years of permitting, that's inconceivable. So I think we really need to be thinking now, yes, it may need two years before the land is ready, but we better have our planning department ready to help these people. Don't be telling me that I've waited two years, or someone's waited two years, and I gotta wait two more years. It's unacceptable. And so let's make plans now. I heard someone mentioned this, an idea that I thought was great about putting a tiny home on his property. We wanted to build an ohana and have income on our property, and we qualify for a fair-sized ohana on our property. We didn't want to do it because of airflow and making neighborhood more congested, so we chose not to. In this situation, I couldn't legally put.
Three minutes.
On my property and hook it up permanently to sewage and electric so it can be livable and follow county codes. Otherwise, I could put a slab in, connect it, you know, for a few, ten thousand dollars, I could hook it up, bring in a tiny home on wheels, and I could have a home for somebody, one or two bedrooms, small tiny home on my property, and I'd be willing to give up parking congestion in my own house to provide a new fine housing for someone. Make that available, there are other people who would make that choice if they could. And then I apologize for taking too long. The other one is, I was in Japan last year, March, and staying in some of the hotels we ran, with a siren by, you would actually hear an announcement, on loudspeaker, old, old school, and it would say, this is what's happening. And I've heard on, like, you know, if you've ever watched Tsunami that happened there, their casualties were in the school compared anywhere else in the world, because they got clear and direct information from loudspeakers. Not a siren and a code, nobody knows, you know, three.
Four minutes.
Apologize for taking so long, I have one more thing that I really want to get in there. And we replaced our landline system, which used to work fairly well with the power of a back in the old days. Most people don't have it, most people rely for all of their information, our cell phones. It is possible to harden the cellphone towers and require them. I know in South Florida, they're the first thing to come back after Hurricane Anthony, which wiped out every two hundred mile an hour winds, they had cell phones in my brother-in-law or my sister, my brother's neighborhood two days after the storm. It's possible to harden those, you could have automatic systems, not a general thing that nobody understands, something pops up on your phone and says, hey, head south, here's your location, this is what's happening. Holding to the fire, it's possible to build that everywhere, not just Lahaina, but everywhere on Maui. Ask about it, tell us, you know, what does it cost, how much is one light bulb, right? How much does it cost, it's feasible, it's doable? Let's, let's ask for it. Any questions?
Actually, thank you, but can you please email that to us?
Yes.
I appreciate that, thank you. Members, does anybody else have any questions? No, thank you so much, I appreciate your listening. Chair, the next testifier is Elijah Cala McShane, to be followed by Ho'oponopono, Mikey Burke, and Adam Morrison.
Aloha, Michael, uh, Elijah Cala McShane going on. It's to be present, I come from Oahu, you know, but these, these issues are not just a Maui issue to, to me. Uh, in collective perspective, this is a Hawaii issue, it's our community issue that, that has emphasis in Maui. And so, you know, I, I'm just here to propose some thoughts that, um, it's important to prove our Ike Kupuna in order to move forward, super important. And I do know to a degree, people in the city council, uh, people in the government have an idea of that, but also to a degree, I don't think they fully have an idea of that, yeah, because of how that looks. A lot of the people who are in government, who make these decisions, are not cultured, um, to Hawaii. And this isn't a racism aspect, it's cultural values that, that have helped our Kupuna to prosper on this ina for over two thousand years. And so these cultural values, implementing them into leadership, into government, is gonna lead us into a future that, that, that can renew all of the innovation of our Kupuna of the past. And everybody has access to, to proof of that if you have access to the mana of our Kupuna, which a majority of people in government don't always have. That's okay, but we can see over the past hundred and fifty years, even the past hundred years, the drastic change in ecology, huge impact on ecosystem health and on development of our people and the health and wellness of the Hawaiian community. And if you trace it all the way back to the smallest detail, it's a change in cultural values, of cultural consciousness, if you really look at it, right? So if we begin to build into the future, and we can obviously see that a lot of the issues that have been happening in Hawaii in the past hundred years stand from an absence of Hawaiian culture values, then what do we need? A reinstitution of Hawaiian culture values into how we make decisions. Super simple, but is it? Is it simple, truthfully? Because there's all of these other issues that intertwine into this, and when we look at tourism, who exploits Hawaiian culture values without any true understanding of the rudeness and the mana, what it means to be Hawaiian, then you can obviously see that whether mana goals or the money goals. Then you can obviously see that whether mana goes or the money goes, attention flows. And so, if we're talking about our water rights issue, our land history, it's all dependent on our values being more focused on economy and absence of ecological purpose.
Three minutes.
And in closing, I just want to give honor and thanks to all the people who have been putting a lot of work in Lahaina Strong, all the viewers of the community. These are the people that, that everybody needs to look to in order to leave a future that can work for all of us, for Kanaka, for Kama'a'ina, and for people that are just living in Hawaii, but call Hawaii home. It's our community who can do this, and I know you guys know this. But do you bother for that, is what I question, yeah? Because all we really need is to sit and to talk story of the Kukapuka. And so in closing, speaking, Alamo Junior, he spoke about our, our housing project and us having a presentation at the disco at 5:00 PM tomorrow. I would so encourage you guys to try to come and be there and just to see what's being presented, because it's not that difficult to get people in housing. There is statistics on the website for the Halema. I call him my, I will go for thirty more seconds. There is statistics that on this island, there's almost 30,000 homes that are potentially being, being used as a short-term rental or not as a primary residence. Almost 30,000 homes. That is a lot of homes that can automatically be incentivized with the governor. If he can pass an emergency population to change things in Lahaina and to change things in housing and land use rights, then he can make an emergency population stating an incentive program to get homeowners interested and inspired to get people that were displaced into their homes that's not being used. Super simple, super simple, actionable item, actionable item too, yeah? Two, if we're going to do any housing development, you know, we're going to expand housing development. We got to make sure that the leadership who is at the helm of the housing development is community operated, is Kanaka and Kama'a'ina there, and is based on Hawaiian culture values. We have to make sure. If we're not going to repeat the mistakes of the past, the mistakes are because Hawaiian culture values are absent. Let's bring them back into the present. And we as Kanaka who are coming together for Halewa Le'le, have a piece of aina in O'oh'ailuka that we are prepared to develop off-grid systems with or without anybody being involved and interested, because our people need us. And when we can see these past two months, it's our Kanaka who come to the call, baby. If we come to the call, why? This is our Kupuna. Nobody knew this. How can aina can say that this is our Kupuna? Majority of the US, not in the homeland, guys, everybody in the US is in another man's garden. So we got to try to do our best to plant our mana in the garden that our Kupuna gave us. And if you guys are interested in understanding that and how to move forward in actionable plans tomorrow, which starts at 5:00 PM tomorrow, it's just beginning. Our Kanaka are on the rise.
Thank you. Wait, hold on. Chair, can you, members, do you have any questions? Member Pa'atana has a question for you. Hold on. Aloha.
Aloha. Um, I just was clarifying, so this is not the same one as the Saturday, Sunday at 3:00?
If this is the same one on the Saturday, this is not the same one on Saturday than Sunday. This is Wednesday and Thursday. But hey, hey, give up to the rich for giving us one room by night.
Okay, so different one.
It's a different one, but according to what I know, I think it's the only one that is Hawaiian memory and based on Hawaiian culture values and the A'ahu'ua system, you know?
Thank you. Next testifier, you. Next testifier, Ho'oponopila, to be followed by Mikey Burke, Adam Morsy, and our final testifier, Kaimish.
Aloha, everybody. So my name is Ho'oponopila. Learned how to do this, so get better at it. I'm testifying on behalf of myself. So just a few things to start, I want to acknowledge all of our unsung heroes, and that includes all of the county departments in Lahaina. So from highways, parks, wastewater, water, the rubbish guys, landfill, all of those guys, because they definitely weren't trained to, to experience and have to go through and have the stuff that they went through to inspire. So I want to acknowledge them, also our teachers and all of our other campus staff, because, you know, they, they've done and continue to do more than, than they should. So a big props to them. So with that, I want to maybe push to advocate for a few things. One being an increase in pay for a lot of our county workers. And I think with that, that'll push to incentivize those jobs, because just from what I've been seeing and hearing, there's a lot of vacancies, right? For, for jobs and openings in the county, for the county. And so if we increase the pay and then make it comparable to and competitive to jobs in the tourism industry, we can put our people in jobs that directly serve our community instead of serving the tourism industry. Just speaking on behalf of myself, it feels so good to say I have a job that doesn't depend on tourism. So when a tourist comes and they say, "Hey, you guys need us," I would say, "Well, but I'm a sister." I really don't, yeah? My job isn't dependent on whether or not we're here. I serve my community. And so if we can increase those wages and make it so that our people want to work for the county. And in addition to that, we now know that Lahaina is, is no exception to, to, to big disasters. And so I think we can use this experience and tragic event to push for classes and certification that will increase experience and build people's resumes within the county so that when us as, you know, our Kiki, our future Mo'una, they go off to college and, and get degrees in, in certain fields, a STEM field, whatever, they have jobs that they can come back to, because the county will provide and continue to push for, for them to come back, and they have a source to come back to. So, um, and in addition to that, I think that, again, with what I've been seeing and hearing, I think it might be important to maybe offer additional supervisory training for a lot of our, like I said, a lot of the departments that I mentioned earlier, to, to maybe help train and, and guide our supervisors on how to work with staff through, that are dealing with trauma and grief, because a lot of our Lahaina county workers are from Lahaina and some of our supervisors aren't. And so, you know, we can push for that kind of sensitive training.
Three minutes.
That might be helpful. And then lastly, just to reiterate, my grandparents live up, upper Lahaina Gona. I know there's been talks and there's been some work and plans happening when it comes to the evacuation routes, but I really want to emphasize that. They got lucky. Them being stuck actually saved a lot of their lives. But that's the only choice they have, right? And for the fire department, they, they, they train, right? Your last resort is to shelter in place. It shouldn't be your only resort. And so if we can push to get clear evacuation routes for that neighborhood up there, I want to reiterate that. And to also maybe take a look at the congestion of parking in that neighborhood, because it's really hard to get in and out of there, not just with the one exit, and, um, but just because there's a lot of cars. So if we can get, you know, a team together to kind of regulate that, just to make it so that it's safe to, to drive in and out of there. Mahalo. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kavonila. I just was wondering on the increase in pay for county workers, because usually it's regulated by collective bargaining. Were you talking about like, like a hazard pay or a cost of living or based on certification? Because, um, remember, remember Johnson probably is the most studied on that. But we weren't able to just raise Maui's thing, although I think there's a state proposal or something to allow us to just raise Maui for it. But, um, have you tried like working within the union to bring it up statewide or allow for just it to be triggered by what an individual county's, um, cost of living is? Because we're not, that's not something that we can, to my, to my knowledge.
Yeah, I know just from my experience that the, the union is involved. And so I know negotiations, negotiations are coming up. So that's definitely something that I know a lot of us are talking about. But I think if, I know that the, the union has to go back to the employer, right? To, to negotiate and whatnot. So if we can just, if I could plant the seed to make the people that are going to negotiate aware of, "Hey, this is coming, and this is why," I think that would be really good. I know retirement is kind of off the table from what I was told. But hopefully, I know that there's some kind of legalities with negotiating retirement. But, I mean, I was thinking, if you don't want to front the hazard pay out of the pocket now, it would be beneficial, maybe, especially for the people that work in Lahaina having to do with all of this, to put that in the retirement, you know, as, as a bonus, if not for them, for their family. But, yeah, that's.
Um, because like, you know, certain of the work departments are like essential workers. During an emergency, maybe during the negotiation, say, like, you know, regardless of what is going on, we need highways, we need wastewater, we need water. If it's COVID or if it's a fire or whatever, and it's not possible. So like maybe an essential worker, a good reason or something.
Yeah, because I think, I think, and I think that would be another good thing too, is because we've seen that all of the, all of the departments are essential and were essential in this crisis, it'd be, I think it'd be really beneficial to, to put them all together and even maybe create like a continuous plan that involves them and their responsibilities so that should we negotiate for something like that, there's something already written that, hey, this is what, in this last tragedy, this is what we have to do. So moving forward, knowing that we are susceptible to fires and, and other disasters, this is what we know we have to do. So, hey, I think it's more than justified that we, you know, get benefited, additionally benefited, so.
Thank you. So I think essential work.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to try to keep clarifying questions before we get into discussion. But basically, have you spoken to your union rep? Have you spoken to the union? Is there movement afoot? Because I can, I can speak for the body, but we want our, we want our priorities done. We want our projects done. It's just as much as everybody else does. But it's hard to do it when there's so many empty spots filled, because the pay is just so low, like you said. So have you spoken to your union? Because I think there is political will to support that.
A hundred percent. Just from my experience, I've gotten a chance to speak with a couple of business agents and also the State Director for our, our, our union. And they seem to be pretty on board and supportive of, you know, our departments pushing forward with these new ideas. And I guess clarifying what is essential and what is not essential for the benefit of us workers. So I, I've had a good experience with them so far. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Chair, the next testifier is Mikey Burke, to be followed by Adam Morsy, Kaimishiki, Julie Brown.
Aloha, my kaku. I am Mikey Burke, of Lahaina. I planned to just sit there and listen tonight, because I was able to testify in last month's meeting. I was number one, so thank you very much. But here I am. This is what happens when you come late, you hear everything going on. So the one thing that I really wanted to talk about is there's a gorilla in the room. There's a gorilla in the town, actually. Nobody is talking about the coordination of the rebuilds. We're talking about sewer in Waikouli. We're talking about burying lines. My, my neighborhood is going to be okay, because it's a brand new neighborhood, and that was all well thought out. That was not thought out for most of the subdivisions in Lahaina. You're going to have to give up property for the wastewater. You're going to have to give up property for the underground lines. And who's going to have the conversation with those property owners, right? And they're, they're probably going to be in separate, because you said in the background, the property is for the wastewater lines. Well, the, um, the buried lines for Hawaiian electric is going to be at the front of the property. But that all needs to be coordinated, on top of the fact that everybody wants to get to their properties and get to it as quickly as possible, because we can't afford to pay $7,000 in rent plus our mortgages. And if you allow us to go back to our properties, you know, as soon as they're all ready, then you can't coordinate all of the infrastructure. So who's going to start to tell our property owners that you guys are going to have to wait a couple more years until we just figure all of this stuff out so that we can build back properly? We got to build back fast, yes, but we have to build back right. And no one has even started to address that. No one's talking about the short-term reset back issue. The entire front street is gone. Does everybody know that they can't build back there? I don't think the people down there even know that they can't build back there. So where are they going to put the front street? Do we move everybody Malka, you know, ship everybody Malka so that they stay at the forefront of Lahaina? Do they all get moved to a separate part of Lahaina? That's going to be an issue, because we know the people who are shit are on that front, right? They're not going to take that lightly. So that conversation didn't start. If that conversation didn't even start, then we can't even start all the other conversations on everybody else's property. So that's the big gorilla in the room. Where is everybody going to go? And how are we going to coordinate this? A couple of daddy videos that are circulating right now on social media. I'm sure you guys are well aware. It's having to do with Maui coming zoning codes. One is Sterling Vika, talking about how you guys are fifty, when I say you guys, I mean county council and general government, you're fifty-three years late on revising the county code and that there's simple things that you can do to Title IX tweaks right now that are going to allow for affordable, equitable housing today. Part of social media is that it gives you just enough information to be lethal. And if that's not the case, you guys got to educate us to say, "It's not exactly like you saying. These are the reasons," or "It's exactly like you saying, and we're actually working on it." Another narrative that's going around and that's being pushed by big developers to say, "Kana'apali 2020 needs to happen." All these developments that, you know, came through the community, it needs to happen now for the community. But there's a reason they didn't happen, and there's a reason we still don't want it to happen. We're not that desperate to turn around and say, "Okay, this is perfect for us," because it's not. It was never designed to help the working class, the people of Lahaina, and it's still not going to be designed to help us now. So please, if you're entertaining those developers, stop. To Paele's point about housing, where everybody's talking about housing, there is enough infrastructure here from Kana'apali all the way to Kapu'ou to house all of us that are displaced and deal with the tourism that's coming back right now. We can all be here. There doesn't need to be a rush. There doesn't need to have people in the community trying to fight to build housing off-grid. We already have the housing wiki here. We just need the political will, and we need a mayor who's going to stand up and say, "Four minutes? It's our turn." One more thing. Thank you. Note to desalination. You, of all people, should know, desalination does not work. Like Cara said, if we've reached that point, we are screwed. And reenter your own list. Somebody brought up the reenter, reenter your own list. There is a list. I know there is a list. You guys are smart enough. The county was smart enough to have an order of how we're going to reenter. They need to share it with us. It might not be that they can share the dates, but at least share with us the list so that we know, "Hey, 5:00 E just opened up. I'm going to be next, you know, in, in that order, and then I can plan my life accordingly." That's one thing that can make things a little bit easier, is to know when we can get back in. Don't have to be the date, but give us the order, because it has to exist. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Members, do you have any questions? Member Pa'atana?
Yeah, I'm so horned for the call.
You know, any other day that would have been a great, great, great offer. Um, but I need to keep my comms in. I'm sorry.
Next testifier, please. Next testifier is Adam Morsy, to be followed by Kaimishiki, Julie Brown, and Kristolona.
Aloha, council. Aloha, members of the community. Thank you both for being here. My name is Ahmed Morsy. All my friends call me Adam. My Hawaiian name is Ke'ola Ma'oloa. I spoke last time at the, the meeting that we had at the hotel in Kana'apali. And I started off by saying that one of the, um, testaments that people are feeling is that they're tired of being second-class citizens. We're over it. Everybody's over it. And it's very apparent, it's bleeding in everybody's face. I don't want to put the young man on the spot who mentioned September 11th. And I don't know how old you are. I'm going to go out on a limb and say that you're in your mid twenties. I comment that because I personally am a former New York City firefighter, and I saw the World Trade Center burning with my own eyes when I was 29 years old, and no one will ever take that away from me. He said a very powerful statement. Lahaina is very, very similar to 9/11 for many reasons. One of the big ones that I personally remember was the EPA coming out and telling firefighters that the air quality down at Ground Zero was fine. I remember that, because guys took off their masks and walked around with cigars in their faces for months. I remember that the EPA, two or three years later, came out and said, "We screwed up and we should not have made that comment." I vividly remember that. I was a 29-year-old young man when I saw those buildings burning. Zoning is ridiculous on this island. They don't make any sense. There are agricultural lots and land deemed as agricultural that people get away with building these McMansions, like we mentioned, and it's just, I, I don't understand how they get away with it, and they live in these communities and they're first-class citizens and they can get away with anything. I say this because I was forced to put a tiny home on a trailer on agricultural land that I own. I was forced. I would have much rather have put it on slab, been a gentleman about it, made it safe for my family, but no, that's not the way the zoning works here. There's a lot of great ideas in the community, and I think these ideas need to be implemented because they're all diverse and they all come in hand in hand. I personally applied for the emergency management position. My wife thought I was out of my mind because I was the perfect candidate for it, but it was a thirty-four thousand dollar a year position.
Three minutes.
Thirty-four thousand dollars doesn't even pay your rent for a year on this island. I'm the most qualified person, and my wife told me I was out of my mind to even think about serving my community. I'm part of the nine eleven medical. I have to report to New York City Fire Department Headquarters every year and do a four to five hour full-blown medical. The amount of cancer, the amount of pulmonary, the amount of suicides is staggering. Three hundred and forty-three New York City firefighters gave their life on September eleventh, twenty-two years ago. Today, twenty-two years later, there's three hundred and forty-three firefighters who have died because of cancer, pulmonary issues, and suicide. I mean, you know, I'm gonna close by saying this. You have the opportunity to work with this community. These people are resilient and will do what they want because they are community-minded. This is your opportunity to work with them. I promise you, walk hand in hand with these people because they will achieve their goal. And just like my brother said, if you do not, I promise you, it will be toke toke. Because they are taking care of their kapuna, their keke, and theiraina, and no one will ever take that away from them. Thank you for your time.
So yeah, next testifier. Next testifier is Kaimi Shiki, to be followed by June Lee Brown and Crystal Lotta.
All of you, I'm running a fire station, then I go somewhere I go, then I take out the firefighter, then I'm always a gorilla, like a firefighter.
How could I follow that up? So cute. Uh, Kaimi Shiki, testifying on my own behalf. There are, uh, according to the Realtors Association, over thirteen thousand, uh, short-term rentals. And I believe, uh, well, I, I guess I'll start with saying, everyone is saying that, you know, that is a viable solution. Um, leadership is saying that, but there hasn't been action taken on it. It's just like, hey, yeah, we already know there's thirteen thousand, over thirteen thousand, um, short-term rentals out there, so yeah, we know that. What are we gonna do about it? And, um, what really needs to be done is we need to put, uh, an immediate moratorium on all short-term rentals, whether they are allowed by zoning or by permitting, and, uh, you know, utilize them to house our, um, local community. And, you know, we need to really showcase that, our neighborhoods, we don't need hotels in our neighborhoods, we need homes. So homes, not hotels in our, in our neighborhoods. And this can be, uh, a temporary measure until we see that the need is not there anymore. Um, but I'm pretty sure that we'll find that we don't really need them, and we need to keep our tourists, uh, at the resorts where they belong. And that will then hopefully help the other problems that we have with tourism and the impacts. I wanted to also advocate, uh, for the over eighty, um, residents who have lost their homes at Ka'ahu'oh Kukui. And, um, right now, um, Ika'au'ana, uh, has, uh, brought up to the county that he would like to prioritize, um, those residents at the development across Ka'avi Street, um, Ka'ahu'oh Kuya. And, um, he is, uh, he, he really needs the county's help to make sure that, that he can legally do that. So really advocating for that. And then also in moving forward, to please prioritize, um, West Maui and, and Lahaina. And what I'm talking about is moving forward in the budget process, um, you know, like, please don't, please don't cut our really important services within the county that need to support the people of Lahaina through, um, through, through this whole rebuild process. And it, it has been very, um, concerning to, to see, um, say like developments in other parts of the island being proposed for, um, for funding from, from the county when the community has been so. The community has been so loud and clear that they want housing in West Maui, and they want safe schooling options in West Maui, and they don't wanna have to live on the other side of the island. And so I would just liken this to, if you have three kids and one of them gets in a terrible accident and loses, and, and their arm was cut off, and they're bleeding out, you know, you, you take them to the emergency room, and it's not that you don't love the rest of your children and, and care about them as well, but Lahaina is bleeding out, and we need to put all of our resources and all of our love and all of our care into Lahaina and housing for our people in Lahaina, and schools for our people, for our children in Lahaina that are safe. And, and we, we love all the rest of, of the, of the county, but they need to kind of put their needs on the side so that we can give Lahaina and West Maui what they need. They need to be lifted up, they need to receive all, all of that care. And, and the, the greatest justification that I can even give for that is that Lahaina, for so long, has brought in the lion's share of resources to the county. And now, we need to give the lion's share of the county's resources to, back to Lahaina and lift them up. And so I'm just asking, in all of your decisions regarding financing and resources and personnel and focus, to please, please focus and prioritize Lahaina.
Thank you. The next testifier is June Lee Brown, to be followed by Crystal Lotta and Jordan Veritas.
Aloha, I was just gonna listen, but, um, there's a few things that haven't been said. My name is June Lee Brown. And, um, my first thing is, in the last two months, I've seen Hawaii people take care of Hawaii people. We have people in our home because of wildfires. We're all doing what we can. And I've seen the Red Cross really be there. We, we just returned back, um, from the mainland and there was one flying in to volunteer. So they're, they're here, and you see so many people from the outside coming in to help Maui. You know, FEMA's helping to clean up. What I also haven't heard though is acknowledgement that we do need outside help. We do need to let the Maui people know, they're making, they're making, we're all making demands. But we need that help from the, from the outside. We definitely can't do this. We can't rebuild, can't do all of this alone. And, um, and I just wanted to bring that out, that, that there are some tourists here that aren't just here for their own enjoyment. They have volunteered, they've donated lots of resources we don't know about. And so, but I do like the idea of promoting Maui as, um, a spiritual and cultural experience. If we can bring that up more, if we can really, um, make that a focus, I, this is not a place that we should make, you know, the playground, you know, the Pacific kind of place. I would really love to see, I support that, you know, any way, which way I can. And in all of your decision-making, um, I just heard somebody talk about wanting to cement Front Street coastlines so they can rebuild their restaurant, and I'm just cringing. Please don't be pressured by the people who have money and power. It, it's just, um, it's just been a pattern, so there's lack of trust. And all I've heard and all the testimonies have been people who really, really need to feel the trust from you guys. And, um, yeah, don't, don't fail us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. First, you have a question. Thank you. The next testifier is Crystal Lotta, to be followed by Jordan Veritas.
Aloha. My name is Crystal Lotta. Um, I was born and raised here in Lahaina. Um, I didn't really have any intention of testifying tonight, but after attending weeks of meetings and listening to the ongoing issues, um, I felt it was important for me to voice my concerns. Uh, it's kind of all jumbled because like I said, I wasn't, wouldn't prepare, so I'm, I'm jumping all over the place. I just wanted to double check, are we streaming this online for people to view also on Facebook, right? It's on Alkaku, on Alkaku, okay. And, um, I wasn't sure if maybe we, were we not able to take any testifiers online also? They didn't have connectivity to have that space. Yeah, I just, I was kind of curious just because, you know, many families that are having to shovel children to multiple schools and still shop for work yet. We can't make it convenient for the community to voice their concerns. Okay, let's start off. Um, uh, let's see. Um, I feel like after listening to so many different meetings and listening to different committees, it seems like the people, the victims, we are the people who have to come up with the solutions. I don't understand why we have to figure out safe education? Why do we have to fight for private landowners and corporations to maintain the dry brush? Why do we have to tell you that commercial operators should not have a priority over our residents? Why do we have to fight for everything? We are exhausted. We are overwhelmed. We have so many issues to address between water rights, Malaram access, basic education in a safe environment, clean air, clean water. Why do we have to fight for our basic needs? What country do we live in? What kind of long-term solutions are we planning for the victims? Is the plan just to offer outrageous rentals? Most of the rentals that I looked into are overpriced. Our mortgage was less than any rental that is currently proposed or on the current market. Why is it that my mortgage in Lahaina, for twice the square footage, is less than just about any rental on the market? Should we look into imposing rent controls? Why have we not demanded and taken action to turn all short-term rentals into long-term housing? Why have we not exercised all our rights under emergency management powers? Why does it feel like our voice doesn't matter? Why is it that when we said we weren't ready to open, still invited tourists into Lahaina? Sorry, I'm not shitting, because this kind of stuff just burns. Why were we lied to? Why is it that we were told that the community was asked if we were ready? Who asked the community? Who was at the meeting? Who was invited? We expect transparency, yet we were lied to. Expecting our community to send our children back to school in the middle of the burn zone is unacceptable. How many of you would send your keke into the burn zone? Would you send your mother or your father back to school as a teacher? We demand a safe environment. For a minute, we demand clean air and clean water. It is unacceptable to tell us in ten years that you had it all wrong. Are we still attempting to lease lands so victims have options, whether they need to look into tiny homes, trailers, anything? Are we exploring options? We need solutions now, not in twenty-four months. We don't need to hold meetings after meetings, we need action. We keep talking and everyone keeps asking us what we want, but it's like, is everyone asleep? It's exhausting to attend meetings daily. We have said what is needed and what is a priority, but it's things that we keep talking and no action. Tell me I'm wrong, tell me we have plans. I don't have all the answers, and I don't expect all of you to have the answers, but please communicate with us. Tell me you are working on solutions for us now, not next year. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Chair, the next division signed, the testifier is Jordan Veritas.
Aloha, everybody. My name is Jordan Veritas. Um, I'm gonna try to be talking like I'm talking to the mayor as well. But I urge all of you to pressure Mayor Bisson. Mayor needs to put his foot down and stand up for the people of Lahaina. The people of Lahaina will back you all the way if you truly take a stand against our governor who is causing nothing but anguish in our Lahaina community. Mayor Bisson, there are now over two thousand short-term vacation rentals operating in West Maui without permits but are legal under an exemption known as a metorialist. Mayor, you have the authority under H.R. S. one-two-seven-A dash thirteen-C in this emergency to, to declare that, um, they no longer operate as short-term rentals and must be used as long-term rentals to house displaced people. I'm sorry, Mayor, but the push for families and households to house displaced families comes with a lot of concerns. Many of us are already living with multi-generation under one roof and don't have any room for the rest of our family to move in with us. We are already doing this and housing our family due to the major housing crisis we have been going through for many years. Now, there's talk about the hubs getting shut down. These hubs are safe havens for our people. They have resources for our people. People are already feeling displaced, and now they're going to feel displaced again by taking away their hubs. What is the reasoning for this? The phase three opening mayor was a total fail. Phase two and three are getting slotted together on November first, but let's be real, tourists have been here in Kana Poli to come to us since before the ten-eight opening date. You came out with these PSA videos that you're so proud of, but are they playing in every single plane? Are they playing at every West Maui hotel? Mayor, this has caused big disappointment and distrust within our community with you. The way to mend this lack of trust is to deal with these short-term rentals in West Maui and make it up to us. On the same conditions at our schools, our schools. Unsafe conditions at our schools, our keke are getting urged to go back to school at the campuses in the burn zone is a slap in our face. It is flawed and it's rushed, and we all know it's due to opening up to tourism and parents needing childcare. It's sick that the state is even saying that it's safe for them to return. And the sicknesses will be on the government's hands for telling these parents that the conditions are safe for them. If you folks really think it's safe, then the government should pay for these kids to get baseline tests done with their doctors to show that they have no sicknesses or conditions now, and God forbid things happen to them later due to this, but they will have the proof and the grounds to sue. A concerned parent quoted in our Lahaina strike the other day about the conditions of the camp third portable rooms. They're way too hot and too sunny. Who came to the rescue with the AC, the fans, and the curtains? The teachers and the community? We figured it out amongst ourselves. Once again, none of this came from the government, and this is sad. Once again, community helping community just like 2018, we know we have each other's backs. We deserve so much better than what we're getting, and it's time for us to be put first. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ms. Ruiz, I appreciate your testimony. Clarifying question, you said that there's talk of the hubs being shut down?
Correct.
Can you elaborate on that? Because that's like the second time I've heard that.
From what I've heard, Mayor Bisson will be shutting down the hubs that are operating out of county parks to free up the parks, but we did hear that the Ikanis Hub will still operate and the Pivano, so that means Esther's and Honolulu will be shut down. And Kailua.
It's a shutdown and not a relocation, just?
From what is going on in the community, it's an absolute shutdown.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bisson. Now, do we have anybody else signed up to testify?
Yeah, on purpose, it's our last meeting, it's still about February 21st.
If anybody hasn't signed up that might want to testify now, please feel free to walk up. Okay. If not, thank you very much for being here. Members, no legislative action will be taken on this item today. This is done so again so we could focus on hearing from all of you. And again, beginning October 30th and continuing on through next week, we'll be meeting on this item again, and we will discuss with subject matter experts and our county administration on how best to develop a comprehensive and recovery plan and resiliency plan in response to these tragic fires of August 2023. If there are no objection, oh, that's right. Members, without objection, I will now close oral testimony. Okay, now, if there are no objections, I will defer this item. Thank you. Okay, so this concludes the Government Relations Ethics and Transparency Committee meeting. Thank you very much, members and community. The time is 8:31 and this meeting is adjourned.